Welcome everyone to tonight's Ordinary Council meeting. I am the Mayor, councillor Georgina Papafogio. I declare this meeting open at 7pm. In the unlikely event of an emergency, please follow the direction of council officers and the emergency procedures on the wall near the door. I would like to note that I have given approval for the journalists from the Brimbank Star Weekly and Channel 31 to audio and video record the meeting. Members of the gallery are not intended to be recorded, but please notify a council officer if you have any concerns. Please note the purpose of a council meeting is to conduct the business of council in an orderly and constructive manner. While council obviously welcomes community interest in council meetings, a council meeting is not a community consultation forum. Members of the public are not able to address council at this meeting tonight or disrupt proceedings. Please also note that in compliance with the advice from authorities, seating in the chamber has been spaced out to comply with the 1.5 metre distance requirement and we have not issued digital agendas as a coronavirus management precaution. Item one, opening. Please stand for the acknowledgement of country. On behalf of Brimbank City Council, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, the Wurundjeri people, and pay our respects to elders, past, present and emerging. Item two, council commitment. I ask councillors to remain standing for the council commitment. Others may be seated. As the council, we will act in the best interests of Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the laws of Victoria and council's local laws and we will act in accordance with our code of conduct. Thank you. You may be seated. Item three, urgent business. Councillors, I would like to... I would like information to be provided to our community on council's response to the coronavirus. May I have a mover of a motion to change the order of business so that we can consider urgent business before apologies and leave of absence? Councillor Goodie-Chair, could you please read the motion?
As printed in the business papers. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Could I please have a seconda? Councillor Tarkos? I will put the motion to the vote. All in favour, against, carried. CEO, is there any urgent business?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to take this opportunity to update the community and the councillors on the actions undertaken by the council in regards to the prevention of the COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillors and gallery staff, as we know, the World Health Organisation has declared COVID-19, commonly known as the coronavirus, as a pandemic. Council staff have had a working party in place since late January to monitor and plan for potential service disruptions due to COVID-19. The health and safety of our community and our staff has been our priority. Initially, staff had been monitoring and working and taking advice from the DHHS and other agencies. But however, in the last four weeks, as information has become increasingly available, more structured planning has taken place. And this week, we have commenced the implementation of a number of service changes. The approach taken by this council has been to strike a balance between essential services that are able to continue in a safe and responsible manner, that supports are in place for the elderly and vulnerable in our community, that any service closures are rolled out in line with advice and evidence, and that the councillors and staff and the community are also afforded safe spaces. We have a risk-based approach that prioritises community. To date, the following actions have been undertaken. A number of events have been cancelled or postponed. There have been changes to the maternal and child health service, a critical service, to a health phone-based service with some limited face-to-face contact. Essential services such as garbage collection, immunisation, meals delivery, health and building inspections and customer service will continue as normal. Planned activity groups and council-run seniors groups, as well as the hiring of all council facilities, have been postponed for the time being. This relates directly to the high risk for elderly people. Our large facilities, such as the Sunshine and St Albans Leisure Centre, the libraries, the St Albans Community Centre and the Brimbank Learning Futures, will close to the public tomorrow at the end of the working day. We understand that this might cause some inconvenience for our community and we've developed a number of alternate programmes to make sure that we can continue to provide support and care and resources for those that are either isolated or have some difficulties. Please be assured, we're monitoring this on a daily basis and will make changes as required. I'd also like to say that we are commencing a rolling programme of having our staff either work from home or in alternate locations. We're doing this because we understand that this is a marathon and not a sprint and therefore we need to keep our staff safe so that they can keep our community safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that report. Item four, apologies and leave of absence. I note that councillor Borg has submitted an apology for tonight's meeting. Councillors, please note that I had requested approval to take leave and councillor Headitch had requested approval to change leave dates that had earlier been approved by council. Both requests are included in the Ordinary Council meeting agenda. In light of recent events, both councillor Headitch and I have cancelled our leave. May I have a mover of a motion to approve the cancellation of councillor Headitch's earlier approved leave of absence? Councillor Farm?
Yes, Mayor, I moved the motion and it printed on paper.
Thank you. May I have a seconda? Councillor Trung? I will put the motion to vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Item five, disclosure of conflicts of interest. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to declare an interest in item 12.4.
12.4. Any other declarations of conflicts of interest? Councillors? No? Thank you. Item six, designation of items as confidential. There are three items to be designated as confidential this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to designate these items as confidential? Councillor Trung?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move in the paperwork. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a seconda? Councillor Allen? I will put the motion to the vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Item seven, confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. May I have a mover for a motion to confirm the minutes of the previous council meeting? Councillor Headitch?
As per the business papers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a seconda? Councillor Farm? I will put the motion to a vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Item eight, condolences. There are no items of condolence this evening. Item nine, congratulations. Councillors, please note that there is an item of congratulations in tonight's agenda. However, as councillor Borg gives an apology for tonight's meeting and this falls within her portfolio, we will consider this matter at the next Ordinary Council meeting and I will not be calling for a mover in relation to this motion. Item 10, public question time. We've now reached the part of the meeting for public questions. Just for anyone unaware, public questions are about to be received in writing by 12 noon on the day of a council meeting. As communicated through our website and to individual questioners, all questions received by council before 12 noon that comply with our meeting procedure will be read out and answered at this meeting and will also receive a written response. Mr Sakurai, I understand we have received questions from the public this evening.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have. The first question is from Mr Jamie Ramsay. And the question is, we have seen much debate as to whether the Melbourne Airport rail link will be a separate tunnel or connecting to the existing rail network from Albion and adding to the already congested line. What is the preferred method for Brimbank council? And if the tunnel is the preferred method, will council actively advocate for it or accept what the state government proposes?
Thank you for your question. Council has adopted a consistent outcomes-focused position, repeatedly calling for a fast, efficient and dedicated airport rail service via Sunshine to maximise the economic and social opportunities for the Brimbank and wider Western Region communities. This has been reflected in our council's response strategy to the Western Rail Plan, its 2020 Transforming Brimbank Advocacy Agenda in urban design principles and in recent media releases. A report on the Melbourne Airport Rail and Suburban Rail Loop projects is due to be considered at tonight's council meeting where further advocacy to the state government will be considered.
The second question is also from Mr Ramsay. Question is, council just released a report on open space deficit in Sunshine. The report clearly shows a clear difference in living standards within different parts of Brimbank and we have the research health outcomes to prove it. Why is it that this council continues to neglect the people of Sunshine North/Albion? And can the local people trust you to do something about it, given not much has been done to date to reverse these outcomes? As we keep seeing new parks being upgraded/created, yet none where needed most. You promised new parks when you sold off in overdeveloped Riverdale, yet no parks have been built and it is at least stage seven now. You promised to develop Stony Creek with the Upper Stony Creek Transformation Project and that has been a failure with it going over budget and the concrete drain remaining and reduced rehabilitation. Does council support the motion for additional land being set aside and using Water West Building as a much-needed community centre as part of stage two development of the Upper Stony Creek Transformation Project? If not, why is this the case?
Thank you for your question. As previously advised, all existing parks in Sunshine North and Albion have been upgraded as part of the council's Creating Better Parks Plan. The development of an action plan for further improvements to the Sunshine North Park network is now underway. In relation to the River Valley Estate development, I have been advised that a suburban park is planned for stage seven, which will add to the existing park network in the area and that is in Duke Street Suburban Park. In regards to Upper Stony Creek Transformation Project, a report providing an update on the project is due to be considered at tonight's council meeting. As previously advised, the former City West Water Site is being developed by Development Victoria and will include new open space with playground and picnic facilities, which is supported by council. The future use of the former City West Water Office Building will be determined by Development Victoria and will be subject to a planning approval process. At this stage, council is not aware of the proposed future of this building, noting council has not considered the use of this privately-owned building for a council service.
The third question is from Mr Neil Head. The Albion community, through Albion and RDA Community Club Incorporated, has identified a need to improve the public realm areas of the heritage-listed 100-year-old Soldier Settlement Estate and has suggested to council officers the commencement of a public realm landscape masterplan. Very interestingly, this small estate contains seven public parkland areas, including corner pocket parks. As a specific example of the suggestion for improvement, some 30 street trees are missing from the area. That is, approximately one-third of the street trees are missing. These missing street trees were itemised by the club to council offices in January 2020. Unfortunately, the officers have advised that this area cannot be replenished till 2021. Our request to council today is more urgent street tree replenishment action in keeping with the council greening of the West strategy in the form of a commitment to replant in 2020 the missing street trees of the Albion Heritage Listed Soldier Settlement Estate in consultation with the local residents of the estate and with relevant advice from the Council Heritage Architect.
Thank you for your question. I note that council officers have already responded to your request. However, to confirm, I provide the following response. Council officers will undertake an audit for infill street trees in Albion during 2020 to enable trees to be ordered and then planted in the 2021 tree planting season. As advised, the 2020 tree planting programme has already been determined and trees ordered for the upcoming planting season. Please be assured that the council is committed to the ongoing implementation of council's urban forest strategy and the regional greening of Greening the West initiative and ensuring street tree planting is implemented across the whole municipality.
The next question is from Hannah Robertson. The question is, we hear a lot about the economic benefit to our communities of expansion at Tullamarine Airport. However, there is little detail as to how these benefits have been calculated. The jobs figures produced in favour of Western Sydney Airport at Badgers Creek have been called into question by independent groups. And in some countries, the health and environmental impacts of air transport operations are being monetised so that we can see the costs as well as the benefits. If expansion of Tullamarine is still expected after the current crisis, will council seek independent confirmation of the forecast economic benefits and adopt any of the monetisation models that have been developed overseas to estimate the economic cost of noise pollution from airport operations when considering the potential economic benefits to Brimbank of Melbourne Airport's planned expansion?
Thank you. Melbourne Airport have indicated they'll release for community comment an updated Melbourne Airport masterplan and major development plan for the third runway in the first half of 2021. Council will consider these documents at this time, including the need for any additional information or analysis, such as economic analysis.
Question number eight is from Sue Pagealitis. As an owner resident caught up in the Sunshine landfill debacle, I would like to ask the following question. Council's handout entitled Closed Sunshine Landfills Information Update, February 2020 states that Brimbank City Council has been working for many years to manage the closed landfill in accordance with the Environment Protection Authority EPA guidelines. Can you tell me the exact date that the EPA became involved and what issue/event brought on that involvement? And why, as owners, were we not told of this at that time?
Thank you for your question. The former City of Sunshine, former Melbourne Metropolitan Board of Works, the former Commission of Public Health, the Environment Protection Authority and the former Environment Protection Authority Board and industrial companies, including Albion Reed and, which is now Borrowed Resources, all played a role in the operation, approval or redevelopment of the Sunshine landfills. The disposal of waste to Sunshine landfills by the City of Sunshine was at all times permitted and licensed under the Health Act 1958 and the Environment Protection Act 1970. In July 2010, Brimbank City Council resumed control of the areas known as the Carrington Drive Reserve and Sunshine Energy Park. And in January 2011, council voluntarily initiated an environmental audit of the site. The environmental audit broadly comprised firstly, a preliminary environmental assessment in 2010, then an environmental assessment in 2012, then an environmental investigation in 2013. The audit was completed in February 2013. Council wrote to surrounding residents, 262 private addresses, regarding the environmental investigations forming part of the order in 2011 and in 2012. Council also held two community meetings, which surrounding residents were invited to provide information about the findings of these investigations. Council also produced a fact sheet, which were provided for information. Following the completion of the environmental audit, the EPA issued council with a pollution abatement notice, which replicated the audit's recommendations. Council has implemented all the audit recommendations. In June 2017, the EPA issued further pollution abatement notices and ongoing requirements for the management of the closed Sunshine landfills. Council continues to manage the closed Sunshine landfills under EPA regulations. Thank you. As we've had a question about the closed Sunshine landfills, I will take this opportunity to update our community about this matter. Council remains absolutely committed to making sure affected households are not unfairly burdened by the closed Sunshine landfills. This is a complex issue and our first priority is continuing to meet with those affected, to share information about their individual properties and to speak with them about their concerns and needs. This will take time. The most important information that we have been provided by our independent specialists, experts, is that it is safe. Residents and workers are safe. The risk to human health from the closed landfills is low. The former City of Sunshine, the Victorian Government and Borrowed Resources, as the previous landowner, all played a role in permitting, licensing and operating the closed Sunshine landfills. This includes the sale and development of the parts of the landfills for residential and industrial purposes. The best way forward is a whole-of-government resolution for those affected. Our community needs and deserves the Victorian Government's collaboration on this issue. Council has requested the Victorian Government consider a range of options to develop a shared and joint response to the closed Sunshine landfills. These options include: number one, support for the Transforming Brimbank 2020 Environmental Equity Agenda; number two, establishing a multi-agency working group of council and relevant government representatives; number three, collaborating to improve the collective understanding of the broad and complex issues, including open information sharing; number four, considering potential opportunities through the Sunshine Priority Precinct; and lastly, a financial contribution to resolve any potential private property owner issues. As we continue our discussions with impacted households, we will gain further insights into the best ways to respond to this issue. We will continue to use the insights gathered from one-on-one meetings to seek further support from government. For example, chronic health issues have been raised by some households and we have requested the EPA investigate these concerns. We also welcome the Victorian Government's announcement that the impacted households will not be impacted by the new environmental regulations. Council is also continuing with plans to prepare and exhibit an environmental audit overlay. Responding to legacy issues and current concerns of impacted households, we will, sorry, will take time and council is here to listen to affected residents and to engage with government to find a joint way forward. Thank you. Item 11, petitions. There are no petitions to be shared this evening. Item 12, minutes or reports for special, of special committees. There are no minutes or reports of special committees this evening. Item 13, officer reports. There are 12 officer reports for consideration by council tonight. Councillors, due to time constraints and the fact that our last meeting ran to 11pm, I will not be granting extensions of speaking times for this meeting. I will review this decision at our next Ordinary Council meeting. Also, we need to minimise contact to practise social distancing. Okay. Item 13.1, Planning Activity Update and Delegate Decisions, February 2020. I invite Kelvin to introduce the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a monthly report to provide council with the status of planning permit applications and trends in planning approvals in Brimbank and also to provide you with an outline of decisions made under delegation in February 2020 regarding planning permit applications and other matters. The attachments outline those details and councillors are asked to note the report.
Thank you. Are there any questions or points of clarification, councillors? None? Is there a motion?
Through Madam Mayor, I move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Thank you. Councillor Goodie-Chair? Would the mover like to speak to the motion? Would the seconda like to speak to the motion?
Just simply to say, Madam Mayor, there is an item where the permit has been granted and it happens to be a project that we love very much in St Albans. So that's definitely in there. The permit has been issued, so it's definitely going ahead. That's the St Albans Health and Wellbeing Hub. I noticed that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Okay. I'll put this to the vote, those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Item 13.2, the Governance Report, March 2020. Could I please ask Linley to introduce the report?
The Governance Report is a standing monthly report outlining key governance activity for the month preceding. This month's paper includes council expenses and relevant committee appointments.
Thank you. Do I, oh, any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover? Councillor Tarkos, a seconda?
Seconda, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Goodie-Chair?
I move the motion as per business papers, Mayor.
Okay. Could I have people, councillors, fill in those positions for those committees, please? The names. Would you like councillor Goodie-Chair to do this for you?
Could I reverse that and get councillor Goodie-Chair to please move it and I'll second it as she has all the names? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, councillor Goodrich is the mover and the seconder is councillor Tarkos. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'm very pleased to move this motion. There's quite a few recommendations there, Madam Mayor. But the governance report includes a wide range of important reports, including the appointment changes that I'm about to mention and also the travel and leave approvals. So I would move that we appoint councillor Tarkos to the Australian Meral Aviation Council. Councillor Tarkos to the Lead West Board, alternate. Myself, councillor Judditch to the Lead West Special Committee. Yourself, Madam Mayor, to the M A V State Council. Councillors Allen, David and Farm to the Chief Executive Officer Employment Matters Committee. Councillor Farm to the Western Melbourne Tourism Board. And also approves interstate travel for councillors Lancashire, Farm, Chong and also yourself, Madam Mayor, to attend the Australian Local Government Association's National General Assembly two thousand and twenty to be held in Canberra from the fourteenth to the seventeenth of June, hoping that that will happen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would the seconder like to speak?
I would like to endorse all those appointments as fantastic appointments, but I'd also like to report back on one particular committee that started in two thousand and twenty and that's the Social Justice Coalition. I'd like to report back that both myself and councillor Victoria Ball are members of that committee, Madam Mayor. And in attendance was the Department of Education, Co-Health, Salvation Army, Brotherhood of St Lawrence, Jerewarra, Smith Family, Lead West, Australian Vietnamese Women's Association, Lord Mayor's Charitable Foundation, Victoria Police, D H H S, Community Plus and Health West. The topic, Madam Mayor, centred around youth unemployment. It was a very important topic and was facilitated by Brooke Queen. It was, the meeting itself was a discussion centred around our excellent new Brimbank project. Can I just say, Madam Mayor, that everyone around that table applauded this project as being one of the most practical projects in terms of helping youth unemployment that we are getting behind. So many of the representatives are keen to get involved and support and facilitate this Brimbank project in which we hope to get at least sixteen of our youth employed in sustainable, hopefully in sustainable employment in Brimbank. I cannot thank the director enough for bringing this project on and how we can work together to support our most disadvantaged as well as address our youth unemployment, which is the highest currently in the state. Thank you.
Do I have any other speakers for this report? Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the council representative for the board on the Western Melbourne Tourism Committee for the past three years, I just wanted to comment on some key achievements. There was the development of the tourism map to showcase council's key tourism areas. Worked on updating the website at Western Melbourne Tourism, which now focuses on advocacy, visitor experience, industry development, communication and engagement. So a much better website to navigate now. Specific inclusion of the Brimbank landmarks. Also proud to develop the visitor economy strategy and sign research that supported that strategy. The Discover Your Own Backyard campaign, which also showcased some of Brimbank's gems in St Albans, Kielore, Sunshine and many others. As well as that, there was also the Hanging Local campaign, which you can also see on the Western Melbourne Tourism website, check it out on YouTube, social media. And just finally, the solid grounding for the opportunities that will come from the Melbourne Airport rail link. So a lot of work going on in that space. Council Farm will be taking over that role and I wish her all the best in continuing to represent Brimbank on the board. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right, I'll put this to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Item thirteen point three, council plan action plan, two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty, second quarter progress report. I invite Linley to brief us on this. Thank you.
The progress reported attachment one is for the second quarter from October the first to December thirty-one two thousand and nineteen and provides results for the hundred and fourteen actions in the action plan.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or points of clarification, councillors? Do I have a mover?
I'll move the recommendation, Madam Mayor, as printed in the business papers.
Thank you, councillor Goodrich. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Farm? Councillor Goodrich, would you like to speak?
Just a few words, Madam Mayor. This is a very important report and the second quarter of our council action plan, where six actions have been completed, a hundred and seven are implemented. One action had not yet commenced at the time of the report, but I understand that it was commenced in January two thousand and twenty was due to. Particularly commend the commencement of the early years outreach strategy where council is trialling outreach initiatives to maximise access to services to the vulnerable families. A very important initiative, I'm sure, everyone will agree. And also, of course, the completion of the St Albans Health and Wellbeing Hub detailed designs, which we are all looking forward to. Another innovative project was the Silo Projection Festival, where over three thousand people enjoyed the evening with not only the projection on the silos, which was absolutely amazing, but music, food, performers and the cooler weather for the night because it was quite cool that evening. So I commend all the residents for coming out on such a cold night. Of course, I could not not mention the completion of the Lakes Reserve Park upgrade. At the opening a few weeks ago, quite a few of us were there, including yourself, Madam Mayor. And I caught up with so many residents who were all extremely happy with the upgraded facilities. That's just a little snapshot of what's actually included in this report, but I commend this report to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Farm, would you like to speak to this? Any other speakers? Councillor Tarkos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to also commend the action plan to support the implementation of the Brimbank electronic gambling policy to reduce the economic, social and health harms associated with E G Ms and other forms of electronic gambling in Brimbank. Madam Mayor, as we know, for the eleventh year, we have unfortunately been the highest in our gambling losses here in Brimbank. Brimbank's social charter stipulates and pledges council to promote, integrate principles of access, equity, inclusion and human rights to all our council policies, procedures and plans. However, sadly, again this year, we have endured those losses. The harm caused by gambling disproportionately impacts our most disadvantaged and vulnerable communities. We've all seen the heat maps, we've seen the S I F A index, we've seen our vulnerable communities time and time again feel the negative impacts from gambling sooner and for longer, sometimes for generations. Our action plan must look at reprioritising stronger reforms to seek the reduction of economic, social and health harm associated with E G Ms. But also, one thing that we did raise as a council is other forms of electronic gambling, such as gamification and sports betting, which is just as harmful to our community because it's available twenty-four seven and deliberately targeting younger generations and hooking them into normalising gambling behaviours. I commend this report and ask that we keep up all actions to prevent and reduce gambling harm in Brimbank. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Okay, item thirteen point four, the Australian Local Government Association, National General Assembly and Municipal Association of Victoria State Council motions. May I invite Linley to brief us on this, please?
This report lists six motions that are proposed to be considered by council to be submitted for the M A V State Council and the ALGA National General Assembly.
Okay, do I have any questions or points of clarification? No. Do I have a mover?
Madam Mayor, I would like to declare an interest at motion number five. I am the president of Club Italia and Club Italia does operate E G Ms, so I have a conflict of interest in this item.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a mover for this item? Councillor Tarkos?
Madam Mayor, I move the motion as per business papers. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor David? Would the mover like to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I share the resilient portfolio with Mayor Council Papa Fatio. The resilient Brimbank portfolio focuses on high-level advocacy issues and opportunities. M A V, or the Municipal Association of Victoria, is a legislative peak body representing the local governments in Victoria. At the State Council meeting in May, council proposes to put forward six motions and they are focusing on women in community leadership, women and girls in sports and recreation, citizenship ceremonies, reducing electronic harm gaming machines and harmful impacts, environmental equity and a motion calling for the Australian and Victorian governments to engage with and support the local government Merrill Task Force for People Seeking Asylum. Madam Mayor, as you know, according to the United Nations, in two thousand and eighteen, there was almost seventy-one million people who have been forcibly displaced as a result of wars, persecution, conflict, violence or human rights violations. The federal government announced in two thousand and nineteen that Australia's refugee intake would be capped at eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty per annum. The S R double S program provides important support to people who are living in our community on temporary visas or where the community detention while the application for refugee status is assessed. These services include accommodation, income support and case management. As a result of recent changes, however, many people seeking asylum will lose all that financial support and access to critical services. This puts them at risk of poverty and destitution and homelessness and puts incredible pressure also on municipalities. The local government Merrill Task Force for People Seeking Asylum is extremely concerned about this and is advocating for a number of measures to better assist asylum seekers and refugees. So council proposes to put forward similar motions to the June A L G A, Australian Local Government Association National Assembly of Local Government Conference. This is held each year in Canberra. ALGA is a nation, is a national voice of local government, representing five hundred and thirty-seven councils across the country. That is just one of the motions that we'll be putting forward to support. Motions close at the end of this month. This conference attracts eight hundred and seventy representatives from councils across the states and territories and is an important opportunity for Brimbank to influence the national policy agenda. I commend this report to my fellow councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Do I have another councillor who would like to speak to this report? Councillor Headige?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to support what councillor Tarkos has said. We've been in these chairs here for nearly four years now and every year we've had this conversation about the inadequate settlement resources provided to new arrival and refugee populations that are coming to this city. We see the outworkings of that in too regular a frequency. We see communities where there isn't enough resources for English language services. We see mothers groups, refugee mothers groups telling us that their children are are not getting enough support through primary school and various other places. Madam Mayor, this is a disgrace. It's been going on and going on and going on and these settlement programs are not resourced well enough. We've heard examples where groups of people have been going to language classes that run out halfway through a year and there's no way of them continuing them on until the new money comes in the next financial year. So they do six weeks, six months worth of work trying to assimilate into the community through learning new language and it goes, the money goes and we have this terrible consequence that people go back to where they were. They lose the ability to utilise the skills they've learned and on we go, the cycle continues. So I endorse all that councillor Tarkos has said. I wish all of you who are going to the A L G A all the best in putting forward the motions and this one in particular. It is so important to our community. We do need a lot more support than we're getting and it needs to be pressed time really, really, really strongly to the federal government. So more strength to your arms. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Farm?
I just want to speak on the motion one and two, which is about women and girl in community leadership and also involvement in sport and recreation. I think speaking up for women to be, you know, standing up, representing yourself and other people around you or for other women or your own community, which is very important because in the past it's women, a lot of earth thing that, you know, we can't do it. But putting up this motion means, you know, giving a bit of more strength to women, saying, you know, stand up, do your thing, believe in yourself and, you know, there's opportunity there for you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you, councillor Farm. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, I'll put this to a vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Item number thirteen point five, draft safe and inclusive Brimbank strategy, two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four. May I ask Linley to present this report? Thank you.
This report presents the draft safe and inclusive Brimbank two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four strategy for council to consider for endorsement for public exhibition for a six-week period from twenty-third of March until the fourth of May, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Linley. Do we have any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover? Councillor Lancashire?
Through Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Headige? Councillor Lancashire, would you like to speak to the item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the Healthy Brimbank Portfolio councillor, councillor Papa Fatio, our mayor, I am pleased to talk about the draft community safety strategy report. Consultation was undertaken during October and November last year to inform the draft community's safety strategy. This included internal workshop with key council staff, survey postcards seeking community views on safety, community safety pop-up event, postcards were distributed, reviewing outcomes from other recent community consultation, which was led by council and the community safety networks, which were police-led. The safety postcards sought local community views on community safety. Over two hundred postcard surveys were completed and the respondents ranged in age from twelve to ninety-one years. Two key questions were asked. What does a safe community mean to you? And what actions can we take to keep Brimbank safe? One-third of respondents said that a safe community is about feeling safe, safe and comfortable in public. More than one-third of respondents suggested increased police presence and support is required to keep Brimbank safe. The community safety surveys conducted across Brimbank by the Victoria Police during the November, December two thousand and eighteen had a strong response with six hundred and ninety-five responses. The focus of this survey was crime prevention and police policies. When asked the question, do you think Brimbank is safe, a safe place? Fifty-three percent reported they thought Brimbank was a safe place, while one-third, thirty-one percent, reported they did not. This again highlights the perceptions of safety is an issue. Positive perceptions of safety are closely linked to community trust and social inclusion. When people feel safe in their community, they are more likely to experience greater levels of social connection and trust and are more confident participating and engaging in public life. Sadly, there was a decrease in the perceptions of safety for both Brimbank residents and Victorians from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fifteen. This safety strategy outlines actions to improve safety and crime prevention in our community. I commend this report to all councillors on behalf of the mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillor Headige, would you like to speak to this item?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, councillor Lancashire has given a very robust summary of the strategy. The strategy is really important. It's come from a process that has been thorough and it is commendable. But I think the most important thing of all will be the community consultation that goes on about it. And then, more important again, is the action. The action plan is what counts with this particular strategy. And, uh, I know that, uh, local residents have been calling for a, a great deal of action around this community because of, uh, perceptions that, uh, that, uh, that safety is an issue, uh, around here. And, uh, I think, uh, we need to hear that, uh, hear that, uh, view. We need to, uh, deal with those perceptions and, uh, I look forward to seeing the set of actions that come from the community consultation and the work that, uh, gets done through this place. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headige. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Trum?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I guess, um, I think with councillor Bruce and councillor John had this that already spoke, but I just want to say, um, safety in Brimbank really important, and I have the feedback, um, from the police. It say it, uh, Brimbank City Council is the one really care and work very long with the police. Uh, regard about the safety for the community, the police and, uh, Brimbank did run a lot of the workshop for the community regard about, uh, safety. Also, a coffee with the call and, um, um, add a chair for the safety round table. So I get a lot of feedback and really would like to say thank you to the leader of the community who get the involve and bring up the issue, how we can do and have further, um, for safety for, uh, our community. I think that is the right idea, and, um, thank you very much for the hard work from the team. Um, they all put a lot of time and give more the attention all the issue relate to the safety of, um, for community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other councillors who would like to speak? All right, I'll put this to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. And yes, we do, I believe, need to work closer with the police. There are many, um, concerns out there in the community, and we need to work together to address these. Thank you. Um, thirteen point six, the Draft Green Gully Reserve Northern Precinct Enhancement Plan. Uh, could I please ask Adrian to present this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this report is for council to consider endorsing the draft Green Gully Reserve Northern Precinct Enhancement Plan, attachment one, for community consultation. It is proposed that the draft enhancement plan will be, be made available for a six-week period of community consultation. And during this period, copies of the draft plan will be made available through council's website.
Thank you. Councillors, do I have any questions or points of clarification? No? Okay, do I have a mover?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Goodrich. Uh, the motion, please.
It's printed in the business papers, thanks.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Lancashire? Would the mover like to speak to the item?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, just briefly, um, this draft enhancement plan is evidenced by our own Sports Facility Development Plan two thousand and eighteen, and also by all of us, Madam Mayor, as when we were elected in two thousand and sixteen, we made a conscious effort to visit and see for ourselves the then current state of affairs of our sports facilities. Happy to say that a lot of those have been improved in the meantime. We then, as a council, though, made a conscious effort to augment facilities and consider where new ones would go. This area at Green Gully is where a whole new concept plan has been developed, and I look forward to hearing from the community and, uh, hearing their views about the plan, and of course, the plan coming back to council for endorsement. The sooner we get it back to council, the sooner we get it into the budget, and the sooner we get moving to build it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Goodrich. Uh, councillor Lancashire, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd certainly like to endorse the comments, uh, made by councillor Judah Chair. Um, I do recall a couple of years ago, um, staff and councillors, as mentioned, walking across the site, um, and having a look at, uh, uh, at what would be this potential future facility. Um, very much needed, and, uh, what's proposed i- is an exciting development o- of the, uh, sporting field, uh, pavilion, landscaping, car parking, um, and I certainly look forward to the, uh, the public consultation and the public's feedback on this. I, I also recall, as we all recall, the, uh, the strategy, which, um, means that we're about twelve uh, facilities that we need to build over the next several years. And, uh, putting this one in place is another one where we can certainly, um, uh, feel pleased that we are working our way through that list and slowly getting, um, uh, those sort of facilities in place and reducing the number of, uh, uh, facilities that we need that haven't been supplied. So this is a great step forward for all of us as councillors to have achieved this big step forward in this excellent facility. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Headige?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the, uh, conversation that's gone before me. Uh, we, we have gone and, uh, seen this site and seen the need in the particular area for, uh, en- enhanced, um, sporting facilities. Uh, this particular initiative is one of many that, uh, are on the, uh, sports facilities program, and, uh, this particular one is noted at page one forty-two as being the highest priority for a new sports ground and sporting infrastructure in the municipality. Uh, I've said it a number of times, I think that the, uh, that, that we need to have a look at the, the priority setting mechanisms that we have. Uh, we have a number of different, um, I guess, programs that have priorities, and often when we bring this, uh, together, uh, there are clashes of objectives and priorities, and, uh, later tonight, I intend to put forward a notice of motion for councillor's support to have a review of the, uh, the way we are doing, uh, priority setting across the different programs when you, when you integrate them and bring them together to make sure that we are getting the right outcomes. I note that, uh, in a particular, in the North Sunshine area, we have Lloyd Reserve.
Could you please refer to this item?
Yeah, I'm getting some comparative, uh, some comparative analysis. I think that's a, a valid thing to do with this particular item. Uh, in terms of talking about the, 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 uh, item itself and the description that's in page one forty-two at the top paragraph, talking about top priorities and, and how priorities are set. I think that's all valid, but, uh, I'm quite happy to say that I'll pick that up in the notice of motion, uh, but just wanted to flag it here now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headige. Do I have any other speakers? Thank you. I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Item thirteen point seven, the final draft, Sydenham Park Master Plan. Uh, could I please ask Adrian to present the report? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the ordinary council meeting held on fifteenth of October two thousand and nineteen, council resolved to endorse the draft Sydenham Park Master Plan for Community Consultation and invited written submissions for six, for a period of six weeks, and rec- and receive a further report detailing any submissions made on the draft master plan and presenting the final draft master plan for consideration. The draft master plan was made available for public comment for a six-week period, ending the twenty-ninth of November two thousand and nineteen. A total of sixteen submissions were received. Um, a summary of these issues in, raised in the submissions to the draft master plan and the council officers' rec- uh, considerations and recommendations is at attachment two. And the final draft master plan at attachment one includes a number of changes based on the submissions and is presented to council for consideration for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or points of clarification? None? All right. Um, could I put this to?
I'd like to move amended motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, um, I've got an amended motion by Mister, uh, councillor Headige. Would you like to foreshadow that? Sorry, I didn't see your hand up, councillor Lancashire.
Uh, we, I was first in line, absolutely.
Okay, councillor Headige, would you like to present your amended motion?
I would. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this particular, uh, project is, uh, a highly valued one by this community. The, uh, Sydenham Park Master Plan process has been going on for a couple of years now, and the Sydenham Park itself is an iconic.
Yeah, you're just reading the motion.
Sorry, sorry. Yes, I, I'd like to put the amended motion, uh, as follows. That an additional, uh, item gets, uh, included as attac- as item A, sorry. Item A reads, respects and thanks to traditional owners of the site, the Wurundjeri warrior wrong for their ongoing nurturing and conservation of the waterways, land and flora and fauna within it for over sixty thousand years. B, having considered submissions received on the draft Sydenham Park Master Plan, adopts the final draft Sydenham Park Master Plan at attachment one to this report, subject to the following text, which was, um, provided, uh, by councillor Lancashire. The fol- the, number one, B one, the following text in italics be added to the last sentence on page forty-eight regarding commercial opportunities. Further determination with the feasibility study will be required in addition to any planning scheme requirements being met under the Brimbank City Council Planning Scheme. And two, the Sydenham Park Master Plan be amended to clearly state that the use of any part of the golf course for other than, for other uses such as sporting grounds be a matter of last resort, and that any links lost must be replaced on land adjoining the existing golf course. Item C commences preparatory work for the following high priority tasks immediately to initiate a comprehensive, evidence-informed approach to Sydenham Park's short, medium, and longer-term development, and refers these tasks to the draft twenty twenty-one budget process for funding consideration. These are item C one O one, Cultural Heritage Management Plan, item C one O two, Feasibility Study, Robinsons Homestead.
And the rest is as per officer recommendations?
No, that's a little bit more still. Over the page, there's a, a, a little bit more in E. D and E over the page.
On E?
D and E. I'm still finishing C. Uh, item C is park, uh, P one O one, Park Access Infrastructure Design and Planning. Item D acknowledges that there are a number of major initiatives currently occurring that have the potential to significantly impact future governance and long-term development of Sydenham Park, including but not limited to the home of football, Matilda's expression of interest process expected in twenty twenty, Melbourne Airport Major Development Plan and proposed north-south runway expansion decision expected in late twenty twenty-one, and the government response to Ministerial Advisory Committee recommendations for waterways of the West expected in late twenty twenty. Point E is another new one, commits to a review of the Sydenham Park Master Plan and consultation on a new version of the Sydenham Park Master Plan once the tasks outlined in part C and D above are completed and the outcome is known. The rest, uh, F G and H R S per the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Tarkos? Councills, uh, would the mover like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes I would. Um, this is a, as I started to say before wrongly, um, this is a really iconic, uh, piece of work for Brimbank going forward. Uh, Sydenham Park is a highly valued, uh, park, a conservation site, and a, a park that had a master plan completed way back in, uh, two thousand and four, sixteen years ago. To date, uh, none of that, uh, master plan has been implemented, and, uh, this final draft of the Sydenham Mark Past, Sydenham Park Master Plan has been one where we've seen there's a whole range of submissions that have come in with a variety of different views, and that, that is democracy at work. We have, uh, uh, an iconic site, uh, on the edge of Brimbank, uh, offering both conservation and, and other uses, and, uh, we, we are here tonight to, uh, to discuss the, the master plan that's been put forward and the future use of this iconic site. Uh, the, the amendments that I've made to the officer, uh, recommendations, the first one, uh, is all about respect, uh, item A. Uh, if we can put that up on the screen, item A, uh, basically picks up on the, uh, reconciliation action plan that, uh, Brimbank has in place, which is all about respect of the traditional owners of the land, and in this case, uh, we are simply saying thanks to the traditional owners of the site, uh, the Wurundjeri warrior wrong for their ongoing nurturing and conservation of the waterways, land and flora for the past sixty thousand years, and acknowledging that ever. Uh, they have been actively involved in the Waterways of the West project, and, uh, their, their efforts in, uh, I guess, uh, continuing to care and look after this site, uh, are there, and we look forward to working in partnership with them as we go forward. The next item is one that's made, uh, was a suggestion by councillor Lancashire, and, uh, uh, he has put forward these, and I accept that, uh, these are, are, are good items to go into this particular, uh, amended motion. Uh, the first one talks about, uh, the feasibility study that were required, uh, in addition to any planning requirements being met under the Brimbank City Council Planning Scheme, uh, councillor, councillor Lancashire put forward a cogent argument for that inclusion, and then, two, the Sydenham Park Master Plan be amended to clearly state that the use of the, that any part of the golf course for other uses, such as sporting grounds, be a matter of last resort, and that any links lost be replaced on land adjoining. I think that is a, a very, very good, uh, amended amendment to this motion, to the officer's motion. Uh, part C, uh, we, we talk about, um, the two thousand and four master plan and the, uh, work that ha- that has to go on after sixteen years. We need to get cracking on things, and, uh, we know, we know very well from reading the master plan that these four items, the Cultural Heritage Management Plan, the feasibility study around Robinson Homestead, flora and fauna study, and the park access, infrastructure design and planning to improve community access to the park are all much needed. And, uh, we are all really keen to see them get underway. They aren't approved in a budget as yet, but, uh, uh, what, what this particular part of the, uh, amended motion tr- is trying to do is to make sure that, uh, that we, uh, have our eye on the ball, and the officers, uh, are underway and preparing the scoping work and all the other things that are necessary should this, um, should these items get up in the budget process, uh, in the next financial year, as we hope they will. And, uh, I guess the, uh, the point of this is to authorize the officers to commence that preparatory work, uh, to enable, uh, I guess, scoping up and then proper consideration by councillors in the draft, uh, budget process. Item D, uh, is all about, uh, acknowledging that there are a number of major initiatives currently going on that are going to significantly impact the future governance potentially, and the long-term development of park, uh, going forward. The home of football, Matilda's expression of interest bid, uh, has been in the news for a long time. We're waiting a result on that. The Melbourne Airport Major Development Plan will have significant potential impacts on the master plan itself and the future use of the site. And the government response to the, uh, recommendations from Waterways of the West Ministerial Advisory Committee will also signif- have some significant impact, uh, later in the year. So all of that comes together, those four pieces of work.
You've got one minute.
Three particular initiatives, thank you, uh, will all come together, seven pieces of work that will have a major impact on this ma- master plan we're considering tonight. And E is all about, once we know all that, in a, in a year or two's time, that we review the master plan as it sits and reshape it in line with the outcomes that have come from those seven pieces of highly valuable and much-needed work. Nothing much else can start on Sydenham Park until they're done anyhow, and we know the outcomes of those. Anything will require feasibility studies, further work and consultation. So E is all about acknowledging that and committing to a review when all these, uh, seven pieces of work are finished, and, uh, the community can then have another say about what is needed, uh, around all this when that's there. That is a substantial piece of work, much more than's been done in the last sixteen years, and I commend it all to the councillors for their approval. I also say that if we approve it as it is, I think all of this will be required anyway. This gives the community a very clear picture of the work that needs to go on on Sydenham Park to make the changes necessary to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak to this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to support it, um, particularly that it pays respect to the traditional, uh, owners of this land. Before Sydenham Park ever came to Brimbank Council, a- as, um, councillor Headige said, it was in the hands of the traditional owners that looked after it. My journey, uh, into Sydenham Park began long before I was a councillor as a volunteer and, um, planting trees, um, along the escarpments there over eight to ten years ago, uh, with friends of, um, Maribyrnong Valley. And, uh, can I just say, it is one of the most magnificent and unique pieces of biodiversity that exists in Brimbank, completely different from any other reserve that, that is, um, within Brimbank. Uh, however, I've been privileged that I've attended those, uh, tree plantings once a year. And when I talk about the beauty of Sydenham Park to other people, it's very hard to convey it because they can't actually go there um, unless it's, um, opened that annual, uh, tree day, um, every year. What, I, I feel that this, um, uh, particular amended mo- motion and the rec- officer recommendation, it does go to the heart of, um, preparing for the activation of this park. I think it is the central theme of what's important here. But before we even open it up for that access, we need to do the following mapping, mappings, and that is the Cultural Heritage Management Plan, feasibility study on Robertson's Homestead, flora and fauna study, park access, infrastructure, design and planning. That will require funding, Madam Mayor, and what I hope is that if we do adopt, uh, this plan and the officer recommendation within it, that we, as a council, finally make that step to fund these, uh, pl- uh, these, uh, budget proc- in, throughout our budget, budget process to finally support our community. support our community in having access to this amazing. And when I say access, I don't mean it in a way where the reserve is open, it is a controlled access, a gentle access where we pay respect to the existing biodiversity there.
Forty five seconds.
I also feel that, as I've mentioned, this is a great start to the activation alongside the conservation of what is a very unique ecological reserve. I feel the master plan as it stands is balanced and is considered in its approach of careful activation and limited access to an inherently protected and unique biodiversity. Right now, our community has only one opportunity to glimpse and celebrate indigenous and European culture. Our community is crying out to learn about its heritage. I endorse this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a
Sorry. Make some comments on it?
Yes.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. Sydney Park is a magical place. At two hundred and thirty one hectares, it is council's largest park. It is also commonly known as the jewel in the crown and for very good reasons. Its plains, valleys, ravines, ridgelines and rocky outcrops are unique within Brimbank and in fact special within the western suburbs. The views within this park are spectacular. Unlike Brimbank Park where the view sheds show buildings along the ridgelines, within the valley of Sydney Park, these visitors are protected. It is in this park that you can see kangaroos, wallabies and visit one of the oldest buildings, Robertson's Homestead, or play a round of golf in Brimbank's only public golf course. Our park contains the confluence of Jackson's Creek, Deep Creek and the beginning of the Maribyrnong River. And that certainly is, I think, a surprise to most people that the Maribyrnong River actually starts in the city of Brimbank. Following on from the previous two thousand and four Sydney Park plan, this revised plan is aimed at preserving the park's natural beauty and significant conservation values. It also provides for the restoration of Robertson's Homestead and the future location of several sports fields. The amended motion put forward by councillor Headitch and which includes two sections that have been added to it. The first, I'll speak to those. The first item recommends that any change to the golf course be minimal. Siting the golf course, splitting the golf course in half as suggested would cost an estimated value of ten million dollars and result in several hundred trees being removed. These are native trees that have been growing for up to forty years. Depending on, and this would be depending on what sort of alternate development is proposed. Half the golf course would be relocated to an open windswept plain with a public road up the middle of this new golf course. This proposal is a poor urban design outcome.
Forty five seconds, councillor Lancashire.
Not, that's why I've included that section. The second point is a proposal for commercial development on Sydney Park. Commercial development on Sydney Park is not in accordance with council's recently adopted commercial development policy. Any commercial rezoning of Sydney Park requires the approval of both houses of parliament and is unlikely to be supported. Accordingly, the approval of the Sydney Park Master Plan is supported with these two variations. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Lanc-
Well, as the one of the ward councillors, Madam Mayor, I would not, I would have to get up and say a few words and I'm afraid councillor Lancashire stole my thunder. I was going to say, I would like the council to endorse this Jewel in the Crown master plan. Because that's what it's come to be with all the residents that helped us all along our journey on the plan. I have to say that the residents' views from the original plan and this plan were not too different. Except that now with the change in the circumstances and having transport and also the freeway going to the Sydney Park has almost made enormous amount of difference as to getting there now. But I definitely would like to support this plan. I feel like we have three recommendations which are all saying the same thing. The officer's recommendation, councillor Headitch's recommendation and councillor Lancashire's amendment as well. So we're all saying the same thing, we all want to support it. We want, we want to all see those items in the budget so that we can move on with this plan. We also want to see what the study on the Robertson's Road, Robertson's Homestead will say, whether it's viable to move it, whether it's not viable to move it, what we can do with it, what we can't do with it. We also look forward to seeing all the other projects that are going to be feeding into this and of course I must add that at any time, should circumstances change, the master plan can be changed at any time. So we will have to bring it back into the chamber and changing it. But I think the most important thing for me is also that if we can provide access for residents to go and see this wonderful park, that would be an absolute achievement in itself. Not many residents would see how beautiful this park actually is and that would be a fabulous and great result for residents to come and view the Jewel in the Crown. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. This is the amended motion. Those in favour? Against, carried. Item thirteen point eight, St Albans Library and Deer Park Library Preliminary Study. Could I ask Kath to present this report? Thank you.
Yes, thank you Chair. The purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the draft St Albans Library and Deer Park Library Preliminary Study two thousand and twenty at attachment one to the report for a period of community consultation for four weeks. During this period, we're going to make copies available online for council's website as well and we're also considering other ways of engaging the community given our social distancing at the moment, so more sort of online engagement rather than hard copies in places. The draft study is the first step in planning for the redevelopment of both the facilities and subject to council adoption of the draft study, a business case for both libraries and hubs will be prepared. As recommended, the council endorses the recommendations as per the business papers.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or points of clarification? I'll put this motion, oh sorry, could I please have a councillor to move it? Councillor Farm.
Yes, I would like to move it as it's printed on the paper.
Thank you. Do I have a second, councillor Tarkos? Councillor Farm, would you like to speak to the?
Yes, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the portfolio champion of the Brimbank People's Portfolio, which is councillor Bob, I would like to speak on it as which, the Brimbank People's Portfolio which include lifelong learning. I am very pleased to see the St Albans and Deer Park Libraries Preliminary Study Report presented to council this evening. In two thousand and eighteen, council adopted the Community Services and Infrastructure Plan, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and thirty eight, which provides council with guiding principles and commitments for planning and delivering community services and infrastructure in Brimbank. The CSIP identifies the redevelopment of St Albans Library and Deer Park Library as the top two strategic priorities for major new community hubs. Projected population growth predicts that these current facilities, which are already struggling with current demand, will not be able to accommodate future users. The draft preliminary study is the first step in planning for redevelopment of the two facilities. The draft preliminary study six, to understand some key questions. Number one, what spaces and services should the redevelopment, redevelop library offers? Two, how big should the redevelop library be? Number three, where should the redevelop libraries be located? And number four is what other services should be co-located with the new libraries? In the developing of the draft preliminary study, council consulted with over seven hundred community members around what they value about the Kirin, St Albans Library and Deer Park Library and what they would like to, what they would like the redevelopment libraries to offer. This idea was used to develop recommendations in the draft preliminary study. Following adoption of the draft preliminary study, a business case for both library redevelopments will be prepared. The business K will consider a funding strategy including capital cost, operational cost, strategic partnership opportunity and a strategic site analysis. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Farm. Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak to this item?
Just to commend what councillor Farm has just said, that both of those libraries have outgrown their demand and the growth of our community. But also to say that libraries is really a misnomer. They're more than libraries now. We actually call them community hubs because they've become centres of people's lives. Today, when I walk past the Sunshine Library or when I walk past the community hub at Keelaw, I don't just see people reading papers or books, I see them actively engaged in doing homework clubs, language classes, all kinds of classes and activities. So we're not talking just about libraries here, we're talking about the redevelopment of these two libraries into community hubs. So by looking at that, we're also going to look at the models that we've used for the Sunshine and the Keelaw hub and that is that we have co-located partners that help the support of those, the existence of those hubs. So in the Keelaw hub example, we have the education department that provides valuable commercial rent there to help maintain that hub and the same here with the Sunshine Library, we have tenant partners as well. So with these two new libraries that are going out for draft feedback, I look forward to the feedback that the community will provide. But I see them more than just libraries, I see them as active community hubs going forward for our community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. Do I have any other speakers for this item? Councillor Headitch?
Again briefly, Madam Mayor, I just stand in support of this work. I congratulate Kath and the team for all the work that's been done here and the quality of the report. It is a very good one and I think it's a bit of a gold standard, you're leaving us with, Kath, so thank you for all your work and your team. For me, these are two of the most important projects in the city. Libraries, places of learning, places of connection are crucial. And in these two communities in St Albans and Deer Park, we have communities that are in dire need of improved, I guess, facilities and programs and I look forward to community consultation on these. I look forward to the scoping up and the preparation of plans and the eventual putting in place of new facilities in these areas. If we think about the long term resilience of Brimbank and the importance of education, training, social connection and so on, these are the places that are going to drive that change and we as a council need to get right behind them as our top priorities. I think they are the things that count in my view. And I look forward to further work and further feedback from the community on this as they go forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Trung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I yes, would like to add in is, I think library is really important, especially for the ethnic community. If we can provide it, it's like councillor Headitch mentioned, it means to connection. And we require is the more different book in different language for different ethnic community. Also the old ones outdoor, because one time I've been to the Deer Park Library. It the mother and the children, they really enjoy to have the activity in outdoor. Also it's like they've been teaching or training to do the planning. And I think that's some part of the activity, it bring the member in our community together and also to provide for the learning service in the different, you know, like sometimes like cooking, knitting, all the language. So I think that's it, library is the really important for each member in my, in our community. And if we can bring all of them together and also to provide a service for everyone. And especially, I know we have some of the volunteer delivering the book to the elderly or disabled people, I think that's a very great idea. Thank you for that and your team. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Trung. Do I have any other speakers for this item? I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour? Against, carried. Item thirteen point nine, Upper Stony Creek Transformation Project, March twenty twenty update. Could I ask Adrian to present this report? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Upper Stony Creek Transformation Project seeks to naturalise a one point two kilometre section of Stony Creek between Furlong Road and Gilmore Road in Sunshine North. Project's works started in early two thousand and eighteen but were significantly delayed in two thousand and nineteen due to the discovery of asbestos containing material to a greater extent than anticipated and the impact on the, and the impact that it had on the project budget. In response to this, council launched the Save the Stony Creek campaign, which sought to build community awareness and support around the need for federal Victorian governments to recommit their existing funding towards the project. To recommence works as soon as possible and to continue to work with council and the community to realise and complete the original vision of the project with additional funding. Works on the project resumed in November two thousand and nineteen, however, the project scope of the budget was required to be reduced, given the available budget. The report is to provide an update to council on the Upper Stony Creek Transformation Project. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Headitch?
Moved as per the business papers.
Thank you. Do I have a second, councillor David? Councillor Headitch, would you like to speak to this report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I think we all know the history of the Upper Stony Creek Transformation Project. It started off as an exemplar to be able to demonstrate the importance of remediating long term environmental damage around a particular area. It was looked upon as one that would show the way around the west as an exemplar project. Sadly, it hit more asbestos than was originally encountered and the project stalled for a while until a large advocacy program was run by council and supported by community. And the project that had ceased as the builder had left the site was pulled back together and a re-scoped and revamped project put in place. The project that was put in, the final revised scoping that was put in place was to be completed within the original budget provisions. I guess it's an example of a project that didn't quite meet the outcomes that were expected of it. But I think the importance of this report is that it talks in B about the continuation of advocacy for additional funding to complete the Upper Stony Creek Transformation Project. For the people of that area, it is so important. We've had previous papers come into this council about North Sunshine and the need for additional open space in that there and this was to be one of them. What we have for the residents who live beside that particular creek now is a complete loss of the vegetation that was stripped out before the work started. And now a whole bare section is there, all the trees and everything gone, people look into their backyards, look out from their backyards where they saw trees and bird life and wildlife and now see bare soil and rocks and a concrete channel. There is a need to do the piece of work to finish off the project in terms of the revised scope, but there is an urgent need to complete the whole scope of those works, however they get determined in the future, knowing that there is asbestos there. But there is a need to continue on with that agenda. I guess it's up to the community and up to the council supporting the community to do that work together in partnership. And we look forward to, we look forward to doing that piece of work in the time ahead. This particular report is a good report that summarizes it well and I commend it to councillors. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Councillor David, would you like to speak to this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, the three member partnership started very happily indeed and it was with regret at the very end to find out that asbestos happened to be present. And I as an individual, well I say I knew, everybody knew that factory across the road, Harden's, was there where they're throwing all their rubbish and no wonder stuff at the time. But, and then I remember the very beginning of the concrete in the Stony Creek. the time, but, and then I remember the very beginning of the concrete in the Stony Creek, and people at the time, they were very happy, because the reason behind it was because at times we used to have flooding, and of course it wasn't very well received at the time, so the council of the day decided to, together with Melbourne Waters, I think at the time, decided to concrete the creek all the way down. However, money speaks all the languages, and indeed, I wish we had the money to continue to finish the jigsaw, as they say, but eventually will be done. One day it will be done, and that's a good thing for our community, and I hope I see it sooner than later. Yeah.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers for this item? Okay, I'll put it to a vote, those in favour, against carried. Thank you. Item thirteen point one zero, Melbourne Airport Rail and Suburban Rail Loop Projects, March twenty twenty update. Adrian, could I please ask you to present this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report is for council to consider recent updates associated with the Melbourne Airport Rail and Suburban Rail Loop Projects, as well as the recent request from Moonee Valley City Council for an additional station at Airport West. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a mover? Any questions or points of clarification? Do I have any questions or points of clarification? Okay, do I have a mover? Councillor Headitch?
Chair.
Councillor David?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, the amendments to this are in point three. There are two additional points to be included that have been discussed with the officers. The first one is, I'll read B three, B three two, the long-term access by Brimbank and wider Western Region residents to timely access to rail corridor and rail service expansions on the Water Gardens, Sunbury and Melton lines to accommodate booming population growth in the area, and three, the equitable provision of future public transport rail services on the suburban rail loop, as distinct from the airport rail services on the Sunshine to Melbourne Airport rail corridor. They are the additions, and I move the rest as per officers' recommendations.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Councillor David, would you like to speak to this amended motion?
Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor David, just wait a minute. Could you just hold on?
Yeah, look, I think I read the...
Councillor.
Sorry.
Sorry, could you just hold for a minute, please? Okay, councillor Headitch, would you like to speak to this amendment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, can I congratulate the officers on an excellent report. They've put together a lot of information and it provides a very valuable context on what's happening around the Melbourne Airport Rail and Suburban Rail Loop Projects. My amended motion seeks to add value to that, and I've had discussions with the officers, and they are supportive of these two additions. The first, point B talks about writing to the Minister for Transport and Infrastructure, the Honourable Jacinda Allan, to reiterate council's previous request for the state government to develop an integrated transport plan for Melbourne's West to support the implementation of Western Rail Plan. We've been seeking that for a very long time, and we continue to seek it as an important part of the future development of transport services in the west, and we look forward to the minister supporting that in the longer term. We've also got point two, that the ultimate design of the Melbourne Airport Rail demonstrates that stations at Airport West, Keelaw Park and Sunshine North are future-proof for inclusion in the suburban rail loop project. Here, we're differentiating between the suburban rail loop project and the airport rail projects, and that these particular stations be part of that public transport loop project. But three is where the action is in terms of this amendment, we're seeking assurance from the state government that the final design of the Melbourne Airport Rail project will not compromise. One, or the first point, is around the future implementation of Western Rail Plan, including future-proofing of the delivery of additional rail services to Sunbury, Melton, Windom Vale and Past Trains to Geelong and Ballarat, all services that go beyond Brimbank and to areas outside of Brimbank. So the next point is about bringing it back to Brimbank and saying that the final design of Melbourne Airport Rail project will not compromise the long-term access of Brimbank and wider Western Region residents to timely access to rail corridor and rail service expansions on the Water Gardens-Sunbury line, which deals with a large part of Brimbank from Sunshine right through, you know, Albion, Interpurse and Albans and up to Water Gardens. We have a number of users of that line, and we also have the Melton line where the Ardier and Deer Park people can catch a train. So we do want to make sure that the Melbourne Airport Rail project, however it's determined in terms of its scope and design in future, does not preclude long-term access to, and timely access to rails, rail corridor and rail service expansions. We're hearing that it might if certain options are chosen, so what we're asking the minister is that that not happen and that the decision accommodate the booming population growth that's going to happen along these lines, and that enables people to catch a train when the train goes past, not be standing on the station because of the lack of rail capacity or corridor capacity, and that the train goes past and leaves them at the station on numerous occasions because there isn't the ability to actually put in place additional services. And the third point is about the piece of the loop between Sunshine Station and the Melbourne Airport. At the moment, we've been talking all about the Melbourne Airport Rail project, which is a train that carries passengers and their luggage, which is different to a normal suburban train, and now we've got the suburban rail loop added in, which is just add a passenger train for public transport linking up to a wider suburban rail loop that goes right around the city. And we're hearing that there may be a combo put in place where both suburban rail loop or public transport rail services and airport rail services for passengers with luggage and all the rest are jumbled together, and that has the potential to create real problems for both user groups going forward if sufficient capacity isn't added there. So this is all about making sure that we have an equitable provision of both public transport rail services on the suburban rail loop that don't compromise both the airport rail and public transport rail services. The rest of the amended motion is as per the officers' recommendation, I commend them, they're good recommendations, so I put forward the amendment on that basis, that it looks at the Brimbank impacts and looks at the impacts on people who catch trains in this area and making sure that their access and long-term ability to see service expansions, additional rail services added in the future actually occur and not be limited by a Melbourne Airport Rail decision that perhaps gets it wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As councillor for the connecting Brimport Folio, which covers all things transport and freight, I'm pleased to see the Melbourne Airport Rail Suburban Rail Loop Map Project March twenty twenty updated report presented to council. The Melbourne Airport Rail and Suburban Rail Loop projects represented the critical investment to Melbourne's public transport network that will have significant implications for Brimbank. These projects are once-in-generation opportunities. The twenty twenty transforming Brimbank advocacy agenda will also in liberating the substantial infrastructure investment for improved employment, education and environmental outcomes for Brimbank. At the end of last year, Moonee Valley City Council wrote to council requesting formal support for their advocacy campaign for a new station to construct, constructed at the Airport West as part of the MAR or SRL projects. While additional train stations have the potential to improve public transport accessibility, careful consideration for committing support for this campaign also needs to be provided to implications that any additional stations might have, or the broader socio-environmental economic inspirations. Council has adopted a consistent outcomes-focused position on the Melbourne Airport Rail and Suburban Rail Loop projects. The report provides detailed updates about the projects and highlights the importance of integrated transport strategy from Melbourne's West to support the implementation of the Western Rail Plan. I commend the report to council, Madam Mayor.
Okay councillor David, just a bit of clarification. You're supporting the officer recommendations or the amendment? The officer recommendations, okay. Do I have any other speakers? No, he's supporting the officer recommendations, so councillor Headitch, you've got the right to respond to... Pardon? So is there anyone else that wants to speak to the amendment motion? You do. Councillor Tarkos? Yep.
Just in regards to the suburban rail loop, the suburban rail loop is what will radically change Melbourne's public transport network as it proposes to directly connect Melbourne's middle suburbs, including Sunshine, with a rail link to multiple employment, education, health precincts outside of Melbourne CBD. While the north-west section of the suburban rail loop is proposed to share part of Melbourne Airport Rail corridor, it is understood that the purpose and intent of the two projects are very different. Council continues to advocate for fast, efficient and dedicated Melbourne Airport Rail services, however, the suburban rail loop provides an opportunity for council to advocate for more regular stops, ensuring a greater population catchment for Melbourne's employment precincts such as Sunshine. This has already been reflected in council's urban design principles for Sunshine to Melbourne Airport Rail Corridor, adopted February twenty twenty twenty, which specifically outlines council's expectations to future-proof station locations and maximise urban renewal opportunities along the line. Madam Mayor, I also wanted to speak to you about Keelaw Park and surrounds, an area that is greatly impacted in my ward. In comparison to the rest of Brimbank, Keelaw Park suffers from relatively low levels of public transport access with only two public buses, routes four six five and four seven six serving the residential area between Keelaw Park Drive and Western Ring Road. Both routes connect the suburb of Keelaw...
Councillors, thank you. Sorry, councillor Tarkos?
That's okay. Both routes connect the suburb of Keelaw Park to Essendon Station via different parts of Moonee Valley City Council, meaning public transport access to other areas of Brimbank is extremely limited. Over twenty-five thousand people live in the suburbs of Keelaw Park, Airport West, Keelaw East, which surround the location of a potential station at Keelaw Park. A new train station at Keelaw Park as part of the suburban rail loop would improve access to these suburbs to the Sunshine Priority Precinct and make it significantly more attractive for a commercial investment, and in doing so, helps strengthen Sunshine status as the capital of the west. So the Integrated Transport Plan for Melbourne's West, as Melbourne's rapid population growth continues in the west and Sunshine develops into a state significant employment centre, the need for a more regional integrated transport and land use planning is becoming more critical. Reiterating council's aspiration for an integrated transport plan for Melbourne's West, which supports improved connections for areas such as Keelaw Park, to employment and education opportunities is just as important to ensure major infrastructure projects such as the suburban rail loop benefit the broader region. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, just some clarification here. Councillor David, although you seconded it, you are allowed to speak against it, so you supported the officer recommendation, is that correct?
Thank you. Thank you for picking up the point of clarification, Madam Mayor. I believe that the officers accepted the amendment.
No, no, no. My question to you is that you seconded the motion...
Correct.
And you spoke in favour of the officer recommendations, okay, which means that you spoke against the amendment, which is fine, you can do that. Yes, okay, thank you. So councillor Headitch, you've got the right to respond.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to respond because I think the whole point of this amended motion was to add value to the officer's recommendation. It is not critical, it doesn't change things, it simply adds two points, and I think the points that we have in front of us, the officer comment, was that council officers note the proposed additional text and have no issues with the inclusion, so I take that on board. I think that it provides Brimbank residents, in terms of additional information, with a clear view as to what council's saying to the state government, that we do want to have the Airport Rail project decided on, but we want to make sure that we have long-term access to the Water Gardens-Sunbury line and to the Melton line, in particular, increased service provision capability and also increased rail corridor capability, and that's a really clear statement that isn't there at the moment. And the other part is about the equitable provision of future rail, public transport rail services from Sunshine to the airport, as distinct from airport rail, because if we jumble the two together, I can imagine in ten years' time, there'll be a whole lot of people trying to get on trains to the airport, to either go to the airport or get on the suburban loop to go somewhere else, and, you know, we can end up with a real congested and muddle-up mess and poor access for our local residents if we don't say these things now. So I point councillors to the officer comment there that they have no issues with these inclusions. Thank you very much, and I recommend the amended motion in that context. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Now, councillors, I will put this to a vote. So now you are voting for the amended motion which councillor Headitch has presented. Those in favour, hands up please. Those against? Carried. Thank you. Okay, item thirteen point one one, contract number seventeen forward slash two one nine eight, carpentry and minor building maintenance extension of contract. Could I please ask Adrian to present the report? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The services associated with this contract relate to programmed, reactive and minor carpentry works on council buildings throughout the municipality. The current service providers have provided a high level of service during the initial term of the contract and have the expertise and capability to complete the works required. This report seeks council's consideration of an extension to contract number seventeen slash two one nine eight, carpentry and minor building maintenance works for a further one-year period to conclude on the thirtieth of June twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, do I have any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover? Councillor Goodrich?
Madam Mayor, I ask the council to consider items thirteen eleven and thirteen twelve, to consider them together as they are both contractual arrangements. Thank you.
So we're moving it on block? Okay, so do I have a second of councillor Headitch? Okay, could I just go back to Adrian, and could you please present a report on contract number twenty forward slash two eight four two, modular sports change rooms, Selwyn Park Reserve, Albion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report is for council to consider awarding contract twenty slash two eight four two, modular sports change rooms, Selwyn Park Reserve in Albion, for the redevelopment of the existing sports change rooms at Selwyn Park. The existing pavilion in Selwyn Park is in good condition and is not due for redevelopment, however, the separate change rooms are extremely poor condition and do not meet the current standards. Furthermore, they do not cater for the needs of females and multicultural communities. Modular change rooms were deemed to be the most appropriate response for the upgrade of the dated change rooms, as they would meet the short-term medium needs of the club in current location. These modular change rooms provide flexible, would be, would be, would provide the flexibility to be relocated and reused in the future at another site when the remainder of the pavilion is upgraded and possibly relocated within the reserve. The tender evaluation panel has rated KL Modular Systems Australia Pty Ltd as preferred tenderer for the tendered amount of eight hundred and six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars excluding GST. It is considered that Modular Systems Australia has the expertise and capacity to complete the works under the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or points of clarification? No. So I ask councillor Goodrich whether she wants these motions as per officer recommendations to be moved on block?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Headitch? Councillor Goodrich, would you like to speak on these items?
I think that Mr Gray has explained the situation extremely well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Headitch? Any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Item fourteen, notices of motion. There are four notices of motion for consideration. Councillors, I remind you that a notice of motion must be moved as printed in the papers and only if seconded can an amendment be made. Thirteen point one, health impact advice on Melbourne Airport's proposed third runway. Councillor Headitch, would you like to move your motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move it as per the business papers.
Thank you. Do I have a second of? Councillor Tarkos? Councillor Headitch, would you like to speak to your notice of motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we've had a long engagement on this particular initiative. The Melbourne Airport Proposed Runway, North South Runway Master Plan Process and the Major Development Plan, the Draft Major Development Plan Process, and we've had a lot of conversations about it. We've also heard from the community extensively over a period of time about the issues that are facing them as they try and consider how an expanded North South Airport, North South Runway would impact residents and other parts of our community, being our parks, our schools, our aged care centres and so on. So this particular motion seeks to obtain from experts in the federal government and in the state government, chief medical officer and chief health officer. On behalf of the Brimbank community, we write to them on behalf of the Brimbank community to inform them of the proposed airport developments that are going on. We request that expert international evidence-based advice be provided to council on the impacts of aircraft noise on community health and wellbeing, on children's cognitive function, on ischemic heart disease, on obesity, on diabetes and any other health impacts. The reason for that is that we're hearing from other jurisdictions around the world that these are real things and that we need to understand them and we need to get into the depths of it and understand it on behalf of community. We're also requesting in point three, eight point three, that copies of the literature review that's used by those organisations to provide the advice to council be also provided so we can see what those background pieces of information are and understand them. And also in B, receive a formal report once we get all that information back from those experts and provide it to council here, including the advice and the literature reviews. We provide it back into this council chamber and make it readily accessible to the Brimbank community. Point C is about providing a copy of the respective pieces of advice to Melbourne Airport for its information and use in preparing its major development plan, its new master plan. And D, that we provide a copy of the respective pieces of expert advice to the Minister for Infrastructure, Transport and Regional Development, the Honourable Michael McCormick MP, for his information in relation to understanding the impacts on the Brimbank community and using that information in his decision-making where he has the final say on all of this. And also includes any advice in E from the Australian Government Chief Medical Officer and the Victorian Chief Health Officer in any submissions council makes to the Third Runway Project, including its major development plan process, which we anticipate will be needed in twenty twenty-one, and some of it before potentially. So I commend this particular motion to council. I think it provides council with the opportunity to demonstrate that it is seeking the best possible advice on behalf of community in terms of the impacts of aircraft noise. And it wants to provide that information back to community, but also to the other major players in the decision-making on this major project that's going on in our backyard here in Talymarine. And us wanting as a council to be up there with the best possible advice. I note the officer's support for this particular initiative, that it adds some value as well. Thank you very much. I commend it to the councillors.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Councillor Tarkos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to wholly support councillor Headitch's comprehensive notice of motion requesting for expert medical advice around the impacts of noise from the chief health medical officer and pass this on to the Melbourne Airport to be used in preparing for its MDP and brand-new master plan. I would also like to add that this same treatment to be included to emissions, given the volume of flights of what's being proposed that will be predominantly impacting the Brimbank corridor. Madam Mayor, I would like to take this opportunity to read out an excerpt from Noise and Health International Journal from an article titled Aviation Noise Impacts State of Science, printed in two thousand and seventeen, page four. Recent reviews of how noise and in particular aircraft noise affects children's learning have concluded that aircraft noise exposure at school or at home is associated with children having poorer reading and memory skills. There is also an increasing evidence base which suggests that children exposed to chronic aircraft noise at school have poorer performances on standardised achievement tests compared to children who are not exposed to aircraft noise. In the limited space available here, it is only possible to discuss some of the central epidemiological field studies forming the empirical basis of these conclusions. So the most recent large-scale sectional study was done between, for children between nine and ten years of age from eighty-nine schools around London Heathrow, Amsterdam, Shipholle and Madrid airports. They found that exposure response associations between aircraft noise and poorer reading comprehension and poorer recognition memory after taking social position and road traffic noise into account. Reading comprehension began to fall below the average at school. And also the reduction of aircraft noise exposure should lead to an improvement in reading comprehension. Studies have shown that interventions to reduce aircraft noise exposure at school.
Forty-five seconds.
Thank you. Do improve children's learning outcomes. The Longitudinal Prospective Munich Airport Study found that prior to relocation of the airport in Munich, high noise exposure was associated with poorer long-term memory and reading comprehension in children aged ten years old. Two years after the airport was closed, these cognitive impairments were no longer present, suggesting that the effects of aircraft noise on cognitive performance may be reversible if the noise stops. Madam Mayor, again, I commend and wholly support this notice of motion. In its truest form, putting our community first, I commend councillor Headitch and urge its support.
Thank you councillor Tarkos, just in time. All right, do I have any other speakers? I'll put this to a vote. Those in favour, against, carried. Well done. Okay, item thirteen point two, Integrated Planning and Priority Setting Framework. Councillor Headitch, would you like to move your motion?
I would, thank you, Madam Mayor. The motion is that council receives a report on process, timing, cost to develop a framework for providing a consolidated analysis of the Sports Facility Development Plan, the Community Services and Infrastructure Plan and the Indoor Sports Facilities Feasibility Study Draft, giving consideration to evidence base in the Brimbank Atlas of Health and Education. The proposed framework will provide a methodology and criteria for future consolidated priority setting and decision-making.
Thank you. Do I have a second of for this motion? Councillor Farm, thank you. Councillor Headitch, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This particular motion is a motion that puts forward a proposal that its time has come. I think what we've seen in our life in this council is the developments of some excellent plans, some the Sports Facilities Development Plan, the Community Services and Infrastructure Plan and now the Indoor Sports Facilities Feasibility Study. Each of those pieces of work have a raft of projects included within them and they prioritise in their own individual plan those key projects in a priority order. The problem comes when we get to determining priorities and we have projects from each of those plans coming together with different priorities and a different, you know, I guess overall objectives. It is about relooking and taking the next step in determining our frameworks and our methodologies for considering our consolidated projects. We talked about the libraries earlier, we talked about other projects earlier. We have this coming forward all the time where we have projects where pieces of one from the Sports Village Development Plan might also be alongside some Community Service and Infrastructure Plan priorities. And the officers are saying that this is a timely thing to do. This is the next step in terms of the way the council needs to consider its priority setting, using an evidence base, using a methodology that consolidates, but also ties back to the Brimbank Atlas of Health and Education, which determines need around the community where it's most highest. As it says in the last sentence, the proposed framework would provide a new methodology that brings together the thinking in each of those plans, brings together the criteria and sets a new set of criteria that enables a refreshing of all that to happen. I think this particular approach enables a better outcome for community. When we have our community hubs, our sporting hubs and things coming together, we can consider them as wholes and consider priority setting as wholes as well rather than individual pieces that may not align at points in time and therefore not get up in capital works programmes and other initiatives. So I commend this as a new piece of, I guess, infrastructure framework for decision-making and, I guess, priority setting inside council. And I put it forward as a valuing and beneficial tool for both officers and councillors alike to be able to consider in the future priorities of consolidation where we have community hubs or sporting and community hubs being planned together. This enables those to be considered in a much more contextual and better way than what we have at present. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Councillor Farm, would you like to speak to this motion?
Thank you. I believe in the work of the officer, of what they're doing with the plan. But speaking on supporting with the motion is because I see the change in the population and the background of our Brimbank resident. And I believe sport for everyone have different tastes. You know, for certain community, there are certain sport that maybe we haven't even think of. It's something that they're really passionate about or can be in their mainstream sport that they believe, you know, they're good at. That maybe haven't been picked up. So supporting this motion is I looking into the angle that, you know, every single sport that are being played in our municipality need to be reconsidered as well. And that's the top priority for that community or that group or that, you know, organisation. And it should be taken into account as well when we plan for our infrastructure. Because for one building or one infrastructure that we plan in the future can maybe cater for ten rather than a five sport that being played at that space. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers for this motion? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour? Against? Those in favour? Against, carried. Thank you. Okay, next item thirteen point three, Melbourne's West Land Contamination Task Force. Councillor Tarkos, would you like to present your notice of motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to present my motion as per business papers. I'll save reading it out, but it's on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second of? Councillor Headitch? Okay, councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak to your notice of motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the health and safety of our community is our first priority. We want people who might be affected by potentially contaminated land to know where the problems are and what the risks are. These conversations will be ongoing as we work through individual concerns and property impacts. Two recent examples of this in Brimbank are Sunshine Landfills, as you spoke to before, that we are speaking with impacted residents about the ongoing issue of, as well of the operating Kialba landfill, which continues to cause impact and distress to our community for the last six months. Having all the relevant information around potentially contaminated land is vital and important first step in responding to the legacy issues that we confront here in Brimbank and in Melbourne's West. We cannot resolve an issue unless we acknowledge it. We have been managing a number of these closed landfills, including the closed Sunshine landfill, the closed Green Gully landfill for many years and following the guidelines from the EPA. Specialised and current independent reports tell us the risk of something happening to community members who live or work nearby these sites is very low and the risks will keep getting lower with time. However, we also understand that closed landfills and their associated legacy issued can be distressing for some community members. And that is why a Melbourne's West Land Contamination Task Force and Environmental Equity Package would address community concerns and issues. Sunshine Landfills, Green Gully Landfill, Kialba Landfill and Raven Hall Landfills are samples of the sites we have also been hearing about people's concerns about and we share these concerns. The historical dumping of Melbourne's waste in the West has led to such contamination legacy issues for the West. That is why in October two thousand and nineteen, council launched its Transforming Brimbank Environmental Equity twenty twenty agenda. Council's environmental equity agenda identifies that Brimbank and other communities across the West for too long have been disproportionately affected by soil contamination, pollution and borne the brunt of Victoria's industrial, chemical waste and transport storage needs. A genuine combination of historic, federal, state and local government decisions around land use as well as industrial decisions and operations have each played a role in land task force. Would give us all, in this contaminated land task force, would give us all an understanding of the legacy left for our community. That is why now is the time for all levels of government to work together to move forward and manage these issues in a collaborative way that improves environmental outcomes for the current and future generations. That is why I'm moving this motion, consistent with council's environmental equity agenda, calling for the state government to take a Western Region-wide approach to addressing legacy contamination issues. Madam Mayor, the establishment of a new Melbourne West Land Contamination Task Force can work not only to better understand and engage on potentially contaminated land issues across the region. The Land Contamination Task Force could be modelled on the Victorian Government's Cladding Task Force, which was chaired by former Premier Ted Bailey and former Minister John Thwaites. The Cladding Task Force model and the subsequent response package it provided to rectify cladding issues across the state is one the state government needs to consider in the context of Western Region landfill and contamination issues. A new land contamination task force should work with local governments and other stakeholders to recognise the historic roles various entities played in land contamination issues across the West.
Got forty-five seconds.
And to develop a comprehensive environmental equity package that fairly supports the communities and residents of the West impacted by historic contamination. I move this motion in good faith of the council's current and ongoing engagement with the state government, the community and other stakeholders as a means to help us progress towards finding outcomes that is challenging legacy issues of potentially contaminated land in Melbourne's West. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tarkos. Councillor Headitch, would you like to speak to this motion?
I would indeed, Madam Mayor, and I congratulate councillor Tarkos for a really good and really excellent proposal. This is a badly needed mechanism across the West and I commend her for all the thought and effort and energy that's gone into putting this notice of motion together. I support everything that's been said. I think that councillor Tarkos has nailed it. I also make the comment though that there are a number of, you know, communities across the West that are being affected right now. We have an extraordinary situation going on. We have the Sunshine Landfills Initiative that's going on at the moment where we're discussing with residents the issues of history and the legacy issues that we're facing. And we're seeking to compensate them in the best possible way. We're also, I think, trying to deal with the Kialba tip fire, which is causing enormous concerns to residents locally and taking a lot of energy and time to address it. But across the Western Region, we have contaminated soil issues popping up in Bulla, Footscray, Yaraville, Brooklyn, Laverden, Warrabee, Bacchus Marsh and always around Raven Hall. It contaminated soil issues popping up in Buller, Footscray, Yariville, Brooklyn, Laverden, Werribee, Bacchus Marsh and always around Raven Hall. And I think it, it demonstrates the extent of the issue, the legacy issue that we have. And, uh, environmental equity is really important going forward and it's great to see on the transforming Brimbank agenda. That environmental equity stands out loud and proud. For me though, I'd like to suggest, and I'm not sure that, uh, Councillor Tarkos, uh, will support this. But I think there's a, a, a point H that goes into this, that council seeks the support of lead western member councils. To the establishment of this particular mechanism. So, uh, I would like to suggest to Councillor Tarkos that we add in, uh, that, um, we, uh. That council seeks the support of lead western member councils to the establishment of this task force as an additional point, if she's happy with that. And, uh, that would add some value to it as well.
I'd say, could you please repeat that?
Okay, the council seeks the support of Lead West, the Re- Western Region Organisation.
Okay, okay, so what we need to do is have this passed and then have an amendment motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I can, I commend the, uh, the notice of motion to councillors.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? All right.
Yes, we do. Madam Chair.
Okay, so it's, it's, um, Councillor Tru, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Yeah, um, I fully support, uh, Councillor Tacko on her motion. Exciting it, uh, and, um, the acting from councillor had this too. I think this, um, one is really, um, important to show is the council. Um, support and understand how to infect to the president, um, in on task area. And I think is the like council tackle mentioned is the, we have food. Our community first and especially for the health. So I fully support for. Um, I don't go to the detail what the council, uh, councillor tackle mentioned. I only want to say I fully support her. Thank you.
Okay, do I have any other s- speakers? All right, I'm just going to, before we take it to a vote, I'd just like to explain a couple of things. If this passes as is, that means we cannot amend it. If it lapses, then we can have an amended motion and put it to a vote.
I withdraw, I withdraw the amendment.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Makes it a lot easier. Thank you, Councillor Hettidge. Uh. All right, so I'll put it forward, those in favour, against carried, thank you. Our next notice of motion is thirteen point four, International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons, Cities Appeal. Councillor Tarkos, would you like to move your notice of motion?
I'd like to move the notice of motion as per the business papers, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Hettidge. Okay, Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak to your notice of motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. ICANN stands for International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons. Madam Mayor, Maria Van Vakenu, federal member for Corwell, wrote to our council on the seventh of February to ask our council to support. ICANN, which was founded in Melbourne in two thousand and six and has led a global movement. In promoting the United Nations Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. In recognition of their incredible work and advocacy, ICANN was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in two thousand and seventeen. Why, I hear you ask, has this come to local government? ICANN Cities Appeal is an effort for this movement to build grassroots support for the treaty. Thus encouraging the Commonwealth Government to sign it. It expresses our own cities' deep concern about the grave threat of nuclear weapons posed upon local communities throughout the world. By endorsing this motion, we will join other local governments such as Hume and Maribyrnong and others. State and federal parliamentarians that also support this signing and ratification of this treaty prohibiting nuclear weapons. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Tarkos. Councillor Hettidge, would you like to speak to this motion?
Like to support Councillor Tarkos. I think the, uh, there is deep concern around the world in the, in the commu- in all communities. That, uh, particularly, uh, grassroots communities around, uh, weapons of any type and in particular nuclear weapons. Uh, they have been a, a problem, uh, for a long, long time in terms of, uh, peace and, uh, stability in all sorts of areas around the world. And, uh, the use of them, uh, is, uh, something that, uh, is really quite contemptible. And, uh, I think, uh, a peace-loving community like Australia, uh, I think, uh, this notice of motion, uh, represents. Uh, the values of, uh, of many who, and most who live in this community, that, uh, the prohibition of nuclear weapons, uh, is something that. Should be advocated for strongly across the world and, uh, I commend, uh, Councillor Tarkos for putting it on our agenda to be able to take some local action. And, and provide support to this international campaign. Uh, I stand with her proudly on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hettidge. Do I have any other speakers for this motion? Councillor Allen?
Um, just simply to say that I support the motion. I think it's very important at this time. Ask me why and I'll tell you. The U S pulled out of the I N F treaty now, for those that aren't aware of what that entails. It's the intermediate range nuclear forces. It pretty much bans nuclear missiles from five hundred to five thousand five hundred kilometres. Now, it's a pact that was from the Cold War, signed, uh, between Reagan and Gorbachev, I think it was. But the important thing is that made us safer and the U S has pulled out of that as of August last year. So I think that now makes this notice of motion that, uh, Councillor Tarkos has put forward all the more relevant.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it to a vote, those in favour, against carried. Thank you. Item fifteen, notices of motion rescission, there are no rescission motions. Item sixteen, confidential business, there is no confidential business.
Um, and in relation to our meeting this evening, we end this council meeting on a sad note. Today Kath Brackett, our Director of Community Wellbeing, informed us that she is leaving Brimbank. To take up the role of Director of Community Wellbeing at Banjo Council. I want to thank this, I want to take this opportunity to thank Kath for all her hard and wonderful work. At Brimbank. Kath commenced in a coordinating role as a social planner, then it, then as a manager. And in nineteen ninety-six became the director, sorry, not nineteen ninety-six, two thousand and sixteen. Became the Director of Community Wellbeing. Kath is committed, passionate advocate for social justice. Welcomes and promotes diversity and cares deeply about people and the provision of a range of supports. To enable all in the community to reach their full potential. Brimbank was very fortunate to have had Kath for nearly ten years. Kath has a wicked sense of humour. She is warm and welcoming. And we will miss her very, very much. Banjo's gain is our loss. On behalf of thy fellow councillors, I would like to thank you, Kath, for your years of service, your commitment to our community. And wish you all the very best and success in your new position. Thank you. Thank you all for attending and for your interest in today, tonight's meeting. I declare this meeting closed at nine nineteen P M. Thank you.